By Dr. Patterson, then pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you that we're on the cusp of a new year. We're grateful for your blessing and guidance last year to get us through that difficult time. We pray, Father, for our willingness to open our hearts and minds to you so that we can find that same leadership this year. Grant to us the grace we need for the work that's ahead, I pray in Jesus' name. Please join me in the salute of America's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to thank everyone that came out tonight. We think those who were drawn to us by Zoom. We won't be long the time we move along with our agenda. It's kind of lifted tonight. Our first line item will be asking if there are any public comments.
Sir, I had no one to call and request tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Next line item is our July twenty twenty-one board minutes. We had a chance to look over those last night. Are there any questions and comments? What do I hear?
Move the adoption of the minutes.
Our second. Most of one, second by another, that we accept the July twenty twenty-one minutes. All in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same, I have so moved. Next line item is a city request to purchase the land behind the old Greewell Middle School.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As we spoke last night, the city is big responsible for the land survey. Fire departments continue to have access for their activities, school system, in the event that the middle school team, for example, didn't need to split a practice field with the varsity. They could utilize it as long as they communicated with them. And then, Mr. Todd, any other? Any other specifics that he was aware of? Mr. Chairman.
City wants working there since they have a side that it's supposed to the city to do the fact. So I'm trying to figure out some other way to work that. It's got to be reasonable in time. I think we got a certain limit of time for twenty years. Add that to the the motion.
What about any type of closing costs or any things? Huh?
To build the land.
Okay.
So are we submitting when we are on giving it to them?
Well, the sign says purchase.
Because the discussion last night was twofold. One question was if we gave it to them, and the other question was if we sold it to them.
But the action item says, say, purchase.
That, well, I think we put the word purchase in there because they're going to take care of the survey, closing cost and other things. There'll be no, 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 there'll be a zero. No cost from the bowl, no. But the purchasing cost, they have to absorb that. Be in the survey, any related closing cost.
Anybody else got any questions, comment concerning that? With the stipulation that attorney just added? What do I hear?
I make the motion that we donate this land to the city of Greewell.
Most of I want to say about another that we stipulation that we put in place. Opposed by the same, so move. The next action item is the site.
Yes.
We done the site that was presented to us last night by technology.
Last night, Mr. Dalton, he spoke to us, and it'll be for the firewall, some backup servers, and then some fire suppression equipment system. And it's going to run in the neighborhood of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, plus or minus a few, okay? Dollars, because I know Mr. Dalton, he does a great job of trying to cut down on those expenses. He can save four or five hundred here or there, but he sent me updated today. And it was last night, it was on two or three different sheets, but he sent this sheet today. So I recommend disaster recovery broadband extension of Meriwether County School Satellite Site be approved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've had, we've had time to consider. Are we ready to vote on this? What I hear?
Make the motion, we adopt the action items presented.
Most of I want to say about another that we we move on, we done the site. That's what we told you, all in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same. So move. We're one.
Thank you, sir.
Did you say that's what we pay for care money?
No, he's got his E-rate money. Leon, are you on the call right there? I think it's, I believe it was E-rate. I do believe it's E-rate. If not, it will be cares.
Action item, we accept the Meriwether, Manchester High School ad lab modification be it. That was presented to us all last night. Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, Mr. Greg Smith Kane. And then we is able to eliminate a little temporary office space for the agri science teacher. There's a little wing that he's a little part there in the ag lab he can use without issue. So the eight hundred and twenty thousand, now eight hundred and fourteen, one hundred and seven, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And care, the second round of cares is the funding source, correct? Mrs. Ms. Woodard.
One more time, eight thousand?
Eight hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. It's on the, it's on the agenda right down there at the bottom in the, in the non-bowl plant. So we had a savings today of just about six thousand dollars.
We discussed this on last night. Any questions, any more discussion needed? What I hear?
No, that price is going to include, in other words, we're not, we're not cutting out all of the stuff that they were giving us contingent.
No, ma'am, it's all there. It's just they realized today that little temporary office space is, it's, it's, it's not necessary. They were just going to put him a little partition in and then take it back down. We got to have that savings.
I'm moving, we award the construction contract as presented.
Most of I want to say that we awarded construction contract as presented to us last night by Mr. Smith. All in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same. So move. Action item, the separate Greewell Middle High School AVAC, AVAC modification be it.
Yeah, this is funded by the SPOSS six that we passed and also the facilities allocation. And including the digital controls. The total is two hundred, excuse me, two million, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars even. This project's been a long time coming. And I thank Dr. Brown and everybody for their diligence in working on this.
Can they check that?
I got any questions and comments? All right, what do I hear? What if I want to say, most of I want to say about another day? We move on this, all in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same. Action item now, both want to be in approval of the, to provide infinite campus training.
Uh, uh, there's one down at the bottom of the page, and that's okay, I understand.
An independent checking connect method contract, yeah, for Rhonda Ollie. It's on the I, and it's the first one, it's our action one on the I.
Might you accept this contract?
Most of I want to say, the second by another, that we accept the contract, all in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same, so move. Second, action item is the approval of to provide infinite campus training. We discussed this on last night. He presented it to us, but are there any questions or any comments? What do we? The most I want to say about another, we approve the infinite campus training, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same. Procare Behavior Therapist Service. La Tonya, La Tonya.
La Tonya Person, yes.
La Tonya? She's there around, I have to learn how to say her name. La Tonya Person. We discussed this on last night, I think Ms. Waller presented that to us on last night. Do we have any questions, time issues here? If we have any questions, comments? All right, what I hear? The most I want to say by another, we accept the procare behavior therapist contract with La Tonya Person's, all in favor. All in short hands, opposed by the same, so move. Parents as teachers.
Yes, sir, last night, Ms. Ziegler, this is the agreement with the healthy mothers, healthy babies, to implement the parents as teachers, and it's funded by the L four G A grant.
Any questions, Ziegler's here? Any questions, any comment? What do we hear? Most of I want to say about another, that we accept the parents as teacher. Presentation, we received on last, my only thing, show hands. Opposed by the same. So move. Independent checking and connecting launch contract for Ashley Hawkins.
Yes, sir, this is, this is identical to the, to the agreement contract we're going to have for Ronnie Ollie.
Comments? Most of I want to say by another, that we accept the contract, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same. So move. Enrichment service program, collaborative agreement.
Yes, sir, last night, Ms. Woodard presented, there's any, any questions from Ms. Woodard?
We hear there's no question, what do we hear? My second, was one by one, a second by another, that we accept the enrichment service program, collaborative agreement, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same, so move. Greewell Middle High School Wraparound Center renewal contract service with, for Mr. Carson Boyd.
Yes, Carson Boyd. This is renewal of the assistant at the Wraparound Center at Greewell Middle High School, sir.
Any questions or comments? That's a renewal contract we had in place
Yes, sir.
last year. What do I hear? Most of I want to say by another, that we accept contracts, so it's a renewal, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same, so move. King Professional Development Agreement for Greewell Middle High School.
Yes, this money will be paid far with the targeted school improvement funds, correct? Okay, and then, and this is, Mr. Perry has, they're coming in and they're doing some, some professional development with our staff.
I think this is, this is the one about how to, how to use our language.
Is that, what all is going to entail?
That would have been, I think it was one about using language. Any other questions come in concern?
Yeah, it was using language to foster engagement, motivation and success, yes, Mr. Chair.
All in, what do I hear? Most of I want to say by another, we accept the King Professional Development Agreement, all in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same. Procare Agreement for Speech, for speech language pathologist. Ms. Waller presented that to us on last, on last evening. Are there any questions, any concerns? CNN, that, what is, what do I hear? Most of I want to say by another, we accept the appropriate agreement for the speech pathologist, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same, so move. Independent contracted reading intervention support teaching from Mountain View Elementary School. Janet Dow, Dow?
Dallas, yes.
Dallas. We discussed this on yesterday in a work session. Any questions or any comments?
Make the motion, we accept this contract?
Most of I want to say by another, we accept this contract, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same. Independent contracted reading intervention, interventionist of support students for Mountain View Elementary School. Ms. Kelly Henderson.
Very similar scenario, both working forty-nine percent to very similar Ms. Janet, that's.
Most of I want to say by another, we accept this contract as well, all in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same sign. Next action item is a check, a check and connect stipend for Tonya Wallace and Kay Williams.
Yeah, it'll be paid for and utilized with the cares three funding throughout the, the cares three one funding availability, which is September thirtieth to twenty-fourth. At that point in time, hopefully, our learning laws will be back to a point where we will actually not need this service. That'd be the goal. This is addressing learning laws. Yes, sir, good question.
But it's not an obligation of the school system to carry on that.
No, no, excuse, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, it is not. This is addressing learning laws, yes, ma'am.
Was my one said, second by another, that we accept the stipend for Ms. Waller and Ms. Williamson for the check and connect. All in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same, so move. Our next three items are board policies. Amending the policy G A E.
Yes, sir, this, yes, sir, this is in compliance with the G S B A. They just made us aware that you needed to strike a statement of however, spin item number one under letter B. Such exclusion shall not apply to procedural deficiencies on the part of the school or school system in conducting evaluations. And you just have to strike that portion of the, of the policy to adhere with law that was passed in the previous legislative session. And it's up for approval tonight, and the final adoption will be September the fourteenth of twenty twenty-one.
I do apologize.
That is okay, I understand, sir.
We have to lay that, that has to be laid on tape.
It does, yes, sir, this one, we're approving it tonight. It'll be formally adopted nine fourteen. It's the first time it's been before the school board, sir. G A E, policy G A E, sir, yes, sir.
So we have to vote on it to lay it on the table?
Yes, sir, voting it to approve it to lay on the table, yes, sir.
I make the motion, we approve this, to lay on the table.
Most of I want to say by another, that we made this, we approve this to lay on the table to our next meeting. All in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same, so move. Action item, policy J C D B, student dress code.
Yes, we reviewed this on July the sixth and voted to lay it on the table until the final adoption tonight, eight ten twenty-one. Thank you for allowing us to print the, go ahead and print the student handbooks. And this is up for final adoption tonight, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? There was a few things that were changing wording. I think we all agreed to it. What do I hear? I, I, no, it's already been on the table.
Yeah.
We're accepting.
We're accepting it tonight. We laid it on the table in July, sir. Uh, policy J C D B. Yes, sir, it's okay, no, sir, I understand. It's a lengthy agenda. What do I hear?
Most of I want to say by another, that we accept policy J C D B, the student dress code, all in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same sign, so move. Actually, item D J, D J E G.
Yes, sir. I got it, not saying you vowels, weren't you? But, uh, uh, this, Ms. Woody, I appreciate her putting this together, but we need to approve to lay on the table for thirty days with a consideration for final adoption on September the fourteenth. So this, and sir, will lay on the table very similar to G A E, sir.
Make the motion that we vote to lay this on the table for that.
Most of I want to say by another, that we lay this policy on the table to be voted on at the next meeting. All in favor, let it be known by your hands. Opposed by the same, so move. Next action item is the steps of the financial report. Are any questions or concern? Anything change that we need to know of? We didn't get no more, man.
You didn't want to mention that call meeting possibility there, Mrs. Woody? On the village.
Right, so we met with Assistant Office, and we put in place a plan contingent on emergency information from the tax commissioner by the end of this week. We'll have a call maybe on our release rate.
August thirtieth at eight thirty A M, Monday morning.
Our plan is to put an add in the paper
Fingers crossed.
Does it have to be set by August third?
Yes, we have, it has to be filed by our board before the tax office can, to their board. They have to approve by the end of the month, so no way, that means they have additional.
Any more questions, comments?
Make the motion, we accept the financial report.
Most of I want to say by another, we accept the financial report. All in favor, show hands. Opposed by the same. So move. Personnel recommendations that were presented to us by Ms. Wilson. That was an A and a B?
Yes, there was some, the time is on, you did it right. Number seven, the background there. Number nine and number two related to that. And then you do two, nine. Number two and three.
Oh, do we have everybody we need to have in terms of faculty?
We still have a few licenses, but we have a contingency plan for each of us. Pretty solid.
We're going to roll on these, section, by section A and section B, I will be standing for more in session. On the roll on, on B. So personnel recommendation, A. What do I hear? The most I want to say, second by another, that we accept personnel recommendations on the sections A, all in favor, show hands. So move. Next line item is the personnel recommendation of, on section B. Most of I want to say by another, that we accept, that we, that we vote on this, all in favor, show hands. Opposed. So move. Legal matters, this is Todd.
Don't have anything else.
Other matters by the board?
The property for that Greewell city by the Meriwether County Court of Education on April fifteenth nineteen ninety.
I thought you still in elementary school back then, Mr. Todd.
You signed about that the superintendent was, seems like rated.
Was a better.
Thank you for looking that up, Ms. Kate King. Be sure to write that down, Ms. Please. Mr. Hinton needs that, needs it. Keep getting questions. There ain't no date. He's thinking around, I'm worried somehow. Now you see why we couldn't find them. I tell him, Mr. Hinton, now you see why I couldn't find any records. But what I mean though is there's no minutes here, any meetings or anything. We don't have commission. I'm glad you found that, but that, that was all we had.
It's a foul. From Robert Reed, Office of the Force Office. You were just writing out the law school, weren't you?
No.
Thank you, Kate King.
All right. Any, any, any other, from the board members? All right, superintendent report.
I will be as quick as possible, because tonight I'm going to email all of you a, a copy of the real plan and I will give you a hard copy of the plan. And we will release it in the morning. And Ms. Woodard, I sent it into the state of, for the carriers, hopefully not to show them, but real and plan for the cares three allocation. You have to be posted. I thank everyone for attending. The first day with students is Monday, August sixteenth. We're prepping. Uh, we're going to be sure to keep the public impressed, ball up, they
Uh, we're going to be sure to keep the public abreast of all updates regarding the health and safety of our student staff and school. Pre-planning is occurring this week at all the schools. It's been very successful. Thank you to everyone who attended kickoff today. I know board members, you're out with your day jobs. We did have two make it. And that was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. Dr. Joe San Filippo from what's that town in Wisconsin? Fall Creek. Yep, it was nice. Oh, open houses will be held throughout the day at schools on Friday the thirteenth. Uh, the one program training with Dr. Stephen Peters and Dr. Mark Wilson has been a success with a leadership team and the assistant principal. Our security awareness audit is now September the ninth. It was just a scheduling conflict there with, uh, Ms. Wilson, so they will come, then update real quick. Liam Dalton did send me some information that, uh, that will use the carriers allocation because we get a forty thousand dollar rebate on that money. I told you, he, he's always, uh, looking for something and then, uh, and then also everybody knows the Greenville middle, Greenville High has a bass fishing team and, uh, it's nothing that requires board approval because it's far below the thirty thousand dollar. We're going, I'll pass this round. We're going, uh, uh, get a P O. We're going to get them a boat. Uh, Mr. Brian Kempson, uh, they're doing a great job with those young people and, uh, and we're going to get them a boat for their team. Uh, it is an honor to serve you. And while Ms. Woody has an announcement on some life insurance, it's part of my report. I'd rather her say it to make sure it's clear. And while she's doing that, I'm going to hand out the reopening plan. Mrs. Woody, while I'm doing this. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wood. You have the reopening plan. We'll release tomorrow. Uh, just to hit the highlights, uh, daily screenings are no longer required unless you're in an outbreak. Uh, individuals, you know, they have to be symptom free for twenty-four hours without any medication for it ain't return school. Uh, we'll have the frequent pan washing. Uh, we'll have the fillable water bottles. When they're un, unable to get those, we'll provide regular bottled water and, uh, water fabs could be used as filling stations. Uh, lunch room, we'll do social distance in there when applicable and disposable plates. Uh, buses, no, we don't clean and disinfect them. Masks are required on buses per federal order. It's still in existence. We will do mask if this, inside our school building for the first nine weeks. After such time, we'll analyze data regarding any continuation of a mask mandate. We'll continue with our eco invasive treatments. Large outdoor sporting events. Masks are, and social distancing strongly encouraged. Inside events, well, like for example, inside sporting event or P, have to wear masks unless they're engaged in the physical activity, meaning they're in the game, okay? Uh, of course, COVID positive individuals have to adhere to the Department of Public Health guidelines and they can't return to let them symptom free for twenty-four hours without medication. Uh, close contacts, uh, as long as they're not symptomatic, there's no need, we will not quarantine. If they are symptomatic, they're allowed to quarantine, receive a, a diagnostic negative test and be symptom free for twenty-four hours without medication. That's it for our close contact or symptoms. Uh, no, the child has, is, is in a quarantine state or COVID positive, so they cannot attend any events. We will do all reporting. I put a sentence in there on Department of Public Health. That, that, that I copied and pasted that sentence from, from an email that they sent me. Regarding communication, we'll keep regular communication with the parents. My plans are to continue to do my daily COVID report. I'll analyze the data from the state and, and keep you abreast of any outbreaks in our ears and regular communication. If a child is a close contact and is not symptomatic, uh, and we will let, let the parents know, hey, he or she was a close contact, but they are not symptomatic. And then the parents at that point down, if they choose to voluntarily quarantine, the parent can do so. Okay, I talked to Mr. Todd about that. That, it was on, uh, the one I handed you yesterday. But, um, that's, uh, that's, uh, an overview and, uh, I thank everyone for their assistance and their patience and, uh, it will be released in the morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm going to go before I'm into him.
Waller, Woodard, Woody, Wilson, come on. It's unbelievable. Oh, wait, there's Williamson. There's more than that. Everybody up here, live same, Ian's in the dug. Woody Wilson, that may be, uh.